Good evening, and good evening, people, you folks watching at home. Welcome to -- we have a doubleheader tonight. Two back-to-back public hearings for October 7, 2019. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Ty Menzler. To his right is La Bonita Boomer, the Clerk of the Board. And sitting on the bench over here is Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager and Finance Director. We're going to start with a public hearing on the proposed amendments to Appendix G of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan, the Capital Improvement Program, for the years 2020 through 2025. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public testimony on the charges -- I'm sorry, on the changes to the county's capital improvement program. If you haven't already, there's a sign-up sheet in the back. Make sure you sign in, and then we will be able to call you in order. Each person will have three minutes to testify. Time may not be ceded to another person. And when the timer buzzes, if you're mid-sentence, please wrap up your point quickly. When you come to the podium to testify, please give your name and where you live in the county for the record. We ask, please, you be respectful to your fellow citizens with your testimony. And I'm going to open up this public hearing. And we'll start with a staff presentation. Chris Shepoe, there we go. Provide background information on the proposed changes, written comments, submitted public hearing, and such.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Christina Shepoe, Senior Planner with Community Planning. Tonight, we are here to receive testimony on the annual amendment of the capital improvement program. It is for the years 2020 through 2025. Just a bit about the process history. The Planning Commission was briefed on July 19 of 2019 and held a public hearing in work session on July 24 of 2019 on these amendments. They unanimously recommended adoption of the amendments to the capital improvement program. That particular document was attached to the AIS and is online. The Board was briefed on August 7 of 2019. And tonight's public hearing was duly noticed in the Olympian on September 13, 2019, and a news release and web mailers were issued out on September 27. To date, the county has received no comments on the capital improvement program for the years 2020 through 2025. So why do we have the capital improvement program? Well, the State Growth Management Act requires the county to adopt a capital facilities element as part of which is in our comprehensive plan, which contains a six-year capital improvement program. It consists of -- excuse me. The comprehensive plan is the guiding document that describes how the county will grow and change over the next 20 years. And the capital improvement program outlines the six-year strategy to provide the facilities needed to keep pace with the population growth and the community changes, to maintain level of service standards as identified in the comprehensive plan, and clearly identifies potential funding sources for the proposed facilities. Although the costs and potential funding sources are identified in the capital improvement program, it is not a budget, nor is it an obligation of the county commissioners for future actions. The capital improvement program is only a financial planning document. However, for future capital projects to be constructed, if the Board approves them through the budgeting process, the project is required to be in the capital improvement program. So what has changed? The county updates and amends the capital improvement program annually to ensure all proposed facilities for construction are in the plan, and updates the inventory of existing facilities with their locations and capacities, forecasts future needs, describes proposed new and expanded facilities with their location and capacities, and provides that six-year plan for anticipated financing that is within the anticipated funding capacity of the county, and identifies any potential funding sources for public funding. That is the conclusion of my staff report. I am happy to answer any questions.
Have you any questions, Chris? Have you?
No, just here to listen.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, very much. Now, we're going to get to the testimony. And again, if you signed up on this sheet of paper, it's titled "The Appendix G of the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program." I'll call you to the podium. You'll have three minutes to testify. And again, we're not to debate and discuss. We'll just listen to your input and document your comments. You're not able to cede your time to another speaker. And again, we ask you, please, to be respectful. So first up is John Pettit, followed by Glenn Morgan. I wasn't trying to be suspenseful. I'm just trying to wait for a Clerk of the Board to come back.
Sounds like a Dick Tracy move to me, hearing off. Good evening, Commissioners.
No, not yet, not yet, not yet.
How can you get extra time now?
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live out off Rich Road in southeast Olympia. I was going through this because this is more than just a document about planning. It's also part of the budgetary process, point-blank. If you don't have it in a plan, it isn't going to happen. Just like City of Olympia has nothing in their plan about participating in the future courthouse issue, it is never going to happen for them. So they don't plan on it, it's not going to happen. So, that being said, this, whoops, this here is the primary chart for showing the things that I saw in the plan. One of the things I took notice of is some of the plan is actually more of a slush budget, slush fund-type planning. And that particular item that I'm referring to in that case would be where it says "Major Maintenance Special Projects 25999." It's $600,000 a year across the board, and it has no specific actual jobs to be done to it. It's kind of like a non-departmental extra slush fund. Now, why that's on here, I really think that maybe a plan should have actual plans. If you want to call it a slush fund, call it what it is. One of the things which I have to note on the plan I'm very disappointed in is that previously, prior to Mr. Menzel coming on the Board, there was a -- in 2016, there was a Ming Study. And one of the things on the Ming Study in particular I'm disappointed with is there was a couple of things removed off of this plan, things that directly related to the courthouse here. And when I say that, the Mancered Roof out here, it was in the plan, actually, to correct it this year. But, you know, they did keep it on the plan. They just thought, instead of fixing it now, let's move it out here to, oh, 2025. It is a good question why you would make a plan that would take off other provisions for the study that was created to put things back in line with all of the county facilities, to move what maintenance needs to be done away from the courthouse. And it's even noted, this is a primary part of the appearance of the courthouse. It's awful, it's rusted, it's got debris. It gives a perception to the public about the care of the courthouse property. Well, for people who want to propose that you want to move forward with more courthouse proposal, I can't imagine having that come out. It's your plan not to do maintenance, and you've removed another one of the items completely off the list. I think you need to go back to square one and start again with your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Morgan.
Well, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you today. Mostly, I was going to focus on the budget, but this was an opportunity to address, I guess, a segment of it, even though I know it's not a controlling document necessarily for how you spend your money. And I guess somewhat to echo what John had mentioned earlier before, I really started -- one of the critiques we'd had, I'd been commenting on county budgets since 2011, on again, off again. And one of the critiques that have been kind of a constant thing is looking at the unwillingness of Thurston County to actually do any of the maintenance on the facilities here. And that's going back at least till 2005, and it's not gotten better. In fact, it's actually gotten quite a bit worse. And the Appendix G actually reflects the unwillingness to actually do useful maintenance on the facility, or even prioritize maintenance that makes sense. It does make sense to actually fix leaks on the roof as a high priority, because the longer you delay that, then the worse the facility gets, and therefore, the maintenance costs increases in the future. And specifically, I'm looking at Item Number 25573, which was actually removed from the Appendix G, and Item Number 25540, which was also removed. And when you start to remove those items of infrastructure improvements and repairs from the facilities, the likelihood of the facility's getting better in the future is reduced. John already mentioned the other one, which was the $250,000 repair to the facility, to the roof, which was another one that should have been -- it just should be prioritized much higher. A couple of years ago, when Greg Couyo retired from the City of Lacey after 24 years as city manager, and I interviewed him, and I said, "What's the first step in understanding financial problems in a city or a county? What's the first thing that you would see before those problems become so significant that nobody can deny that they're there?" And Greg told me that the first thing you want to look for is maintenance, whether that be road maintenance or facilities maintenance. The first thing that a city or a county in distress starts to show that's going to basically be a prelude to financial problems in the future is decline in maintenance. And there's been obvious decline in maintenance on the courthouse facilities, and unfortunately, I think those decisions are reflected in this, the Appendix G, which we're talking about right now, and should be reprioritized back into the capital facilities budget before you start going out and building new courthouses or other facilities. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. That extends the names that have signed up. Is there anybody in the gallery here that would like to address the Board that hasn't signed up and has not spoken yet? Get your name and where you live in the county.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Kristi White, and I live in the Delphi Valley. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. I just wanted to comment overall on the capital budget plan with -- I'm pleased to see that it is a plan and not a firm budget. That made me feel a little bit better for the staff report. As a financial manager for going on 35 years, I was concerned that as I went through some of these proposals, that I didn't see the cost-benefit detail analysis that I was looking for. I was looking for, for instance, if you look at the fairgrounds, there is a proposal for infrastructure improvements, talking about increasing overall revenue. Well, before you spend $250,000, I'd like to see a little bit more about, well, what is that overall revenue increase projection before putting that kind of money? Now, maybe this is going on in the background somewhere, but I felt as I went through so many of these capital improvements, that the implication for not doing the project or the reason for was a few sentences. And I understand staff is limited. However, when we're looking at this level of money being spent, that we really do that drill-down cost-benefit before we, you know, start spending all of this money. The other concern, I know the courthouse is a hot issue, is again, looking at committing citizens to paying for this bond that would cover the courthouse, again, looking for that deep dive echoing some of the other gentlemen about, you know, maintenance costs, you know? What are those costs that we are already expending and looking future compared to, you know, building something new? And I just feel like we need some more detail in the financial data to really get behind all of these proposals. So that's my comments and ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to address the Board on this issue? Anyone? Anyone? With that, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Well, I'd make a motion to close this public hearing.
It's been moved and suggested to close this public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This one is closed. And now, we're going to move into the public hearing on the Thurston County 2019-2020 Biennial Midterm Budget Adjustment for Operating and Capital Budgets following the Capital Facilities Plan Public Hearing. Is that the sign-up sheet? Okay. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear public testimony on the county's preliminary midterm adjustments to the 2019-2020 Biennial Operating and Capital Budgets. The preliminary budget was published online September 23, 2019, and has been available to the public, excuse me, to the public pursuant to public notice since that date, online and in print upon request. The public hearing is in accordance with RCW 36.40.070. And just as before, there is a sign-up sheet in the back. Please sign up if you haven't added your name already. I have one here. And it'll take you -- I'll call you by name in order as you've signed in. Because this is the budget, I've taken the prerogative to add two minutes, so you'll get five minutes to testify. I will call out the names for oral testimony. You come up when you hear your name, please, to testify. You may not give your time to another person. We ask again that you be respectful. And the timer's up here, but here's how we're going to do this. We're going to do three minutes and then add two minutes. Once this three minutes expires, we'll add two. Apparently, we can't do five. But when you come to testify, here's the difference. You come up, you can talk, if you wish, and testify, or if you want to ask a question, a budgetary question, then direct it to the Department Director or the elected in charge of that department. They will not answer, eating up your time. So you'll see the timer start when you ask your question, and then when you're done asking your question, the answerer will come up and answer the question. And then when you ask your question again, your time will start. So you'll be able to get quite a few questions in, I would imagine. It won't be bantering back and forth, I would hope. It's going to be question and answer, question and answer. And you've already seen how the timer works. And so now, I'm going to open up this public hearing. And we'll have a staff presentation by Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager/Budget Manager. And then you'll be able to ask your questions and make your comments. And we ask the representatives from every office and department here to respond to ones that are directed toward you. So, Robin, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. I'm going to do a brief overview, maybe 10 minutes, of the budget at a very high level, and then you'll be able to open it up to the questions from the public, who I'm very happy are here this evening. So this is the 2019-2020 biennium, and we are at the midpoint. And state law requires that we have a midterm adjustment. But the midterm adjustment is a much more restricted process. We don't open it up to everything. We adjust just very specific things in this process. So that's what you'll hear about this evening. And, ah-ha. So we'll do a high-level look at revenue and expenditure estimates. I'll give the highlights of what the Commissioners have proposed as the midterm amendment, and that's the preliminary budget that's been published. And then I'll talk a little bit about what's next in the process. The county budget, just a big general overview. There are over 80 separate funds. You have the General Fund, and then all of the rest of the funds are restricted in some manner. They cannot be used for any purpose, only the General Fund can be used for any purpose. We have 20 distinct offices and departments. 11 are headed by independently elected officials. You have eight departments that are under the direction of the county manager on your behalf. And then we have one department that's led by a joint executive committee, that's Pretrial Services. You have a biennial operating budget, as I said, and we're midway through. And you also have a capital budget that includes full project costs. It's balanced to the Capital Facilities Plan, also known as the Capital Improvement Project Plan that you just had a hearing on. And it provides flexibility between the years. So the capital budget's a little different than the operating budget in that you approve the total cost of a project over time, and then the the total cost of a project over time, and then the county has that time to implement the project. But I will reiterate that the CIP that you just reviewed is not the budget. You still approve specific projects in the budget, and you approve those projects as we go. So just because you approved the CFP, and a capital item must be on the CFP for us to do it, as Mr. Pettit said. But just because it's on the CFP doesn't mean that that's what we're going to do, and it's also only a cost estimate. Here we go. So here's the current economic outlook. Property tax increase is limited to 1% growth. As you know, the expenditures grow faster than we are allowed to raise our property taxes. Property taxes, as you'll see, is our major source of revenue. So that puts a lot of pressure on the general fund. This year, the assessor estimates new construction at $656.6 million in the county. That is a growth of 15% over the prior year. That's a pretty high rate of growth for new construction. Growth in sales tax revenue is continuing at what I consider a very robust rate, 8.7% growth year-to-date in sales tax. We generally see somewhere between 4% to 5%, but the last few years has been over 7% by the end of the year, and this year is no exception. But we don't anticipate that continuing for too many more years. On the state level, the Economic Revenue Forecast Council is predicting a weakening, especially in the real estate market. That's going to impact, has like a trickle-down effect, if you will. And our county auditor has reported that REIT filings are down, but our REIT revenue appears to be coming in pretty flat compared to next year, so we haven't seen a downward effect, if you will, of the real estate market itself. It's pretty hot in Thurston County by all accounts. But there are predictions that it's going to begin to soften. The unemployment rate in Thurston County is starting to creep up, currently in August at 5.3%. Compared to last year, it was 4.5%. So that's another indicator that we are creeping into a potential economic downturn. Population growth county-wide is 1.4%. The unincorporated, it's not much more than that. We see fewer opportunities all the time for state and federal grants, and more competition for the dollars that are available. And as you hear me say every year, the cost of doing business outpaces the revenue growth. So that's kind of a over, a high-level overview. And here's a few graphs. Here's the county unemployment rate back to about 1990. And what you see is what we would expect to see. It's the normal economic cycle. You see a downturn in the early 1990s. It picked up. There's another downturn right around 2000, 2005, and then we see the Great Recession hit in 2008, 2009. It's coming back down now, and it is pretty close to the bottom of the cycle compared to prior economic cycles. Here's our county sales tax growth rates back to 1992. It's pretty much the same chart, only on the inverse. And you see that in 2018, the year-over-year growth rate is pretty much as high as it's been prior to any other beginning of an economic downturn. So we could be at the peak. Here is new construction values. I only have that back to 1999. I don't have prior years handy, but this chart shows the same kind of cyclical effect. In 2007, just before the Great Recession hit, new construction for 2007 was about $1.1 billion. And you see that it very quickly fell to right around $300 million a year, and stayed there for a few years. This particular economic downturn, it was in a long bottomed-out cycle. The economists say it's more of a U shape than a V shape. That's a little unusual, but you see it reflected here in our new construction values. We're creeping back up, but I don't think that we'll ever see, or in the next few years, I really doubt that we'll see it back to $1.1 billion the way it was just before the Great Recession. That was pretty unusual. The other thing that I have here, this is starting to be old news now. This was from an article in the Washington Post in August. But this is the inverted yield curve, and it was worth talking about again because what the economists say is that in nine out of the last 10 recessions, the yield curve has inverted, and that's been an indicator that we're about to hit an economic downturn. So, and that's what we saw just about two months ago. And so that is a pretty significant indicator that within the next two years, we'll see recession. And the economists are talking about this a lot. So I just put these out there to say that we are potentially at the peak of an economic cycle. We don't see future years continuing at robust growth. If anything, we're probably going to continue at the peak and then start to see a softening of our revenue collections. So that's kind of where we are economically. With that background, we start to look at the budget. And here are the sources of revenue for all of the funds in the county. Your major source of revenue is taxes and charges for services, but taxes by far the largest source of revenue. You'll see in a moment all the different types of taxes and other items that you collect, but we are projecting in 2020 total taxes of $316.9 million. That supports the county budget, and here it is in the form of a graph. The examples of the revenue taxes, of course, property tax is our largest source of revenue, sales tax, special revenue taxes such as treatment sales tax or detention sales tax. We have charges for services that include disposal fees at the work or internal service charges. Inter-governmental revenues are state and federal grants and revenue sharing such as the liquor profits. We have licenses, permits, fines, and forfeits. Those are the things that one would expect. Marriage licenses, construction permits, environmental health fees, court fines. Those all fall into that category. We have miscellaneous revenue, that is, for the most part, our investment income, and then transfers between accounts, such as from the road account that collects the tax to start with, transfers money to the road construction account so that we can appropriately account for the capital expenditures on our roads. So those, that is just one example of the transfers between funds. Here are the sources in the general fund. Again, taxes, the largest source, charges for services, intergovernmental and other, $104.4 million anticipated in 2020. There's the graph. And then because taxes are the major source of revenue, we've broken that down. Property taxes are anticipated at $43 million next year. Sales tax, just under $20 million. All other taxes, $5 million. So you see right away, property and sales tax are the sources of revenue that we depend on the most. But total revenue from taxes in the general fund make up approximately 60, a little over 60% of the revenue for $67.5 million. And again, a graph. Because property tax is such a large source, we like to just have this graph that the majority of property taxes that the treasurer collects on our behalf does not stay in the county. Less than 10 cents on the dollar goes to the county general fund, and the rest of the money, as you see, goes to other jurisdictions. 60 cents on the dollar goes to the state and local schools. Just under 9 cents on the dollar goes to cities and towns, about the same, go to the fire districts. 5 cents goes to other jurisdictions. And then there's the 9 and 1/2 cents that goes to the general fund. A little 5, under 5 cents goes to the roads. A little 2 and 1/2 roughly goes to medic 1. And 0.32 cents goes to our conservation futures fund. So if you're familiar with conservation futures, this 1/3 of a penny on property taxes is how that money is collected by the county. That's the source of revenue for that fund. But very, very little of the property taxes stay in the county. Here are our proposed expenditures. In 2020, the board's preliminary budget includes $363.1 million in total, and of that, $108.8 million is proposed spending from the general fund. And here are the highlights of the changes. So in the general fund, in the revenue, the property tax estimate increased by $323,000. That's the 1%. It is not a lot when you think about that as our very largest funding source in the general fund. The auditor's office licensing fees have increased by approximately $600,000. That is because the state legislature passed a bill that raised the licensing fees that we keep. This is deposited to the general fund for general purposes. It's not restricted funding. The juvenile court parent pay program, we are collecting significantly less money for that program, so we adjusted the revenue appropriately. We expect $96,000 less per year from that program. We are collecting very little and are actually changing the policy on how that program is operated in juvenile court. And then the board has authorized an increase in the road levy shift. Now, this is different than road diversion. The board has authorized $1.5 million in road diversion funds. That goes from the road fund to the general fund, and that money can be used solely for safety purposes, road safety purposes in the unincorporated area. And the county uses all of those funds to pay for sheriff deputies on the road who are doing road safety traffic stops, DUIs, and those sort of things on the road in the unincorporated area. The road levy shift is different. So the board will be doing a levy shift, which the law allows for any legal purpose from the road fund to the general fund. And the total amount of the levy shift will be $3 million. And this increase is specifically to support parks. So those are the revenue changes. The expenditure changes in the general fund. The clerk's office had an FTE that collects legal financial obligations, had been charged to one of your restricted funds that is solely for legal financial obligations, but the revenue in that fund is not collected at the same amount as we had expected. So the board authorized the shift of that cost to the general fund, which is an appropriate use of the general fund. The Superior Court was authorized for a law clerk, a single law clerk, not two. The sheriff's office was authorized funding for a crime analyst. This is a position that already existed and had an end date, so the board extended the end date and funded the position. The sheriff's office also received one new patrol deputy in this budget in 2020, and this cost, $197,000 a year, includes the cost of the sheriff's vehicle and other equipment that they will need to be able to do their job. In non-departmental, the board authorized an increase for medical payments for LEF-1. Now, that stands for law enforcement officers and firefighters. And in the LEF-1 retirement system, these retirees are entitled to the county paying all of their medical costs for the rest of their lives, and those costs are increasing pretty steadily. So as they age, the costs go up, and the county is obligated to pay. We expect it to be 100,000 more than when we originally enacted the biennial budget. So the board has authorized that payment. Non-departmental funding of parks, this is the levy shift from the roads fund coming into the general fund, and then we will use that solely for the purpose of funding parks. And then in our long-range planning office, there were two positions with end dates. The board extended those dates and provided the funding to pay for those staff. Those staff are currently working on items related to your docket, such as the comprehensive plan. In other funds, there was numerous adjustments in treatment sales tax, and I could certainly get the details if you'd like to have them, or if anyone's interested in them, but it was a lot of small movements in treatment sales tax. The board has authorized a cost-of-living adjustment of 2.4%, and that is the amount of the cost of living. So what you have authorized is we have union contracts with an agreement that in 2020, the board would provide a cost-of-living increase that is tied to the CPI, and this was the CPI. So this is what you were obligated to authorize for those contracts that have that clause. You also approved this same increase for non-represented employees in the county. And for those contracts that do not have a clause that's tied to the CPI, we've put in a 2.4% increase in the budget, so it's available to the offices and departments, but the contracts are currently being negotiated. So that's not a settled-upon amount. We're negotiating in good faith, but the money is here should the agreement be reached with those other union employees. with those other union employees. There is funding for a courtroom audio and video replacement project. Just off the top, I don't remember exactly how much that is, but it's being paid from the combination of the trial court improvement fund and the information technology reserve fund. The auditor's office anticipates increased election costs. This is a presidential election year, and I would just add the comment that the state of Washington does not pay the county their fair share of costs in a presidential year. So the county has to cover these costs, and we anticipate that will be in addition to $410,000, plus this will cover the cost of the special election for the courthouse in April of 2020. The sheriff's office has new funding of 130,000 for a detective for the narcotics task That will be paid from the task force fund. Then there is an increase in the cost of medical benefits for county employees. That is 88,000 to the general fund and 179,000 for all funds, and the increase is 4%. That increase is set by the state of Washington. We purchase medical benefits from the public employee benefits board, or the PEB, as it's known. The county risk pool contributions have gone up. Our cost to purchase insurance has increased, in part because the amount that offices and departments were being charged in the past was a reduced amount. We had excess fund balance in that fund. We no longer have fund balance, so the cost of the rate to contribute into the risk pool has increased. That is driving that 400,000. The other thing is the insurance industry across the nation has increased for governments because of some very significant natural disasters in other states, but it's affected government insurance across the nation. So that drives that cost up. ERP, that is the enterprise, enterprise resource, thank you, enterprise resource program. And what that is, because even when you spell out the acronym, you still don't know what that might be. What it is, there's the replacement of all of the county's financial and payroll and HR systems. Those systems have come to the end of their useful life. We need to replace them. We're in the middle of the project, and we need to backfill the staff time it's going to take to implement our new systems. That's significant. And other jurisdictions who have implemented the ERP said, "Do not leave out funding for the backfill." That's one of their main lessons learned. So you have authorized $504,000 for staff time to implement the new programs once we select them. And then in the information technology department, you may recall that central services and IT split. This is a continuation of the split. IT needs additional staff. We knew that was coming. So this funds three FTEs from the information technology fund. Those are the overall highlights. And I'll just end with the forecast of the general fund. What you see there is a dark line at $10 million on the graph. That is what you need in the general fund to meet cash flow needs. So we project ending fund balance at the end of 2020 in your proposed budget of just under $12 million. And if we project out to 2022, it will still be over $10 million. So we'll be able to meet cash flow needs in the general fund if you should enact this budget as proposed. So here's the schedule for the rest of the process. We published the budget on September 23rd. It's been online. It was available in hard copy should anyone request it. Here we are today at the public hearing. You have your final deliberation work session scheduled on October 9th and 10th. On October 29th, you will adopt the midterm budget. And then on November 26th, state law requires that you hold a public hearing on revenue that will support the budget by the end of November and adopt any revenue changes specifically for property tax. So that hearing will be held on November 26th. That's the last possible day before we have the Thanksgiving holiday. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Long time, yes. Do you have questions?
Maybe just a clarification on the ERP backfill where you're replacing equipment. That has to do with the equipment that is no longer supported by the original purchase. Is that right? The vendor no longer supports that stuff?
Yes, our payroll system is called Eden, and we were notified by the company, Tyler, who has the Eden software, that they would be stopping support of that project. Now, that's not next year. It's a few more years, which gives us time to implement a new system. But along with payroll, we've had Munis for a long time, at least 15 years, I believe, if not longer. And really, you want systems that talk to each other. And one of our big challenges is that Eden and our financial system, Munis, don't talk well together, and they're not integrated well with the budget system that we use, yet another product called Questica. So we're looking for a product that will integrate seamlessly and be much more effective and efficient for our county.
You don't happen to know what we're getting as far as gambling and liquor tax, do you? It's not, it's like a, almost nothing?
Just off the top of my head, I can't tell you how much we are for the liquor, the shared liquor tax. I want to say it's around 400,000, but I could be thinking of the marijuana revenue sharing that they receive.
400,000 is about where marijuana is at.
Right around 400,000, yep. But I think that the liquor tax is a similar amount, and then the profit sharing is another, I want to say, $230,000 in the general fund.
I guess just for the public that's here and watching tonight, I like to point out, because we are making an expenditure in parks, that we have four employees in the county parks department. You can imagine all the parks we've got around the county. And the city of Lacey has 38 in a small geographical area, and they have, you know, nice parks. I'm not being critical. I'm just saying that the funding mechanism is just not there to support parks. But I guess I would finally comment that I believe the public has been tricked when it comes to alcohol, gambling, marijuana. Those were all supposed to cover certain things, and I'll just give you a kicker. We bring in $17 million for the state on marijuana tax. That was last year's number. And we get right at 2% is what we get back. And we do all the regulatory stuff, the zoning, the planning, the enforcement, the whole thing. But I think you were tricked on that, just about the way you were tricked on the lottery. That was going to pay for schools, so it might be a little questioning of what the state says once in a while, and I'd like to see somebody hold their feet to the fire. That's my time at the podium. Thank you, sir.
You believed them?
Well, I might have been naive.
My question of you, Robin, is would you just, again, briefly reiterate what you said earlier, the difference between the levy shift and diversion?
So the road diversion, that is money that we take from the road fund into the general fund that must be used on traffic safety purposes in the unincorporated county. We report that to the Crab Board. It's audited every year. So that's diversion. It's got those restrictions. We have to carefully account for it.
Crab meaning, for the public, Crab meaning?
Oh, Crab, County Road Administration Board, run by the state of Washington. So we report to the state every year. The levy shift is different. We calculate that when we calculate the property tax, and then you shift the levy capacity to the general fund. The money's collected into the general fund and can be spent on any legal purpose. I don't have those RCWs off the top of my head, but I could certainly give them to anyone who's interested. It is a completely different RCW, and the money then collected into the general fund can be used for any general fund purpose.
Thank you. All right. Anything come up? No?
I have just one question, just the property tax. When you talked about the 1%, 23, and you said, "Oh, property tax is 40 million." Is that a disparity because of new construction money that goes in?
It is. There's new construction money, there's state utility money, and then there are refunds that we count, and those are, that all adds up, if you will. So the total increase is right around $1 million, which still doesn't pay for the cola in the general fund. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Nothing else? All right. So now is the time for the public to make comments and/or ask questions. And we have a representative from every office and department here to respond to your questions, or you don't have to ask questions, you just make comments. Again, you're not limited to three minutes, you're limited to five minutes. And we'll start the clock at three. Only your time is going to count, not the response time. That does not count against your time. And then we'll restart it with two minutes to give your total of five. If you haven't signed up, you're still able to sign up on a sheet in the back, and I have the one for the public hearing on the midterm budget amendments here. I will call you up, and please give your name and general address in the county where you live, and ask your question of the specific department or assistant county manager so we can get someone up to answer your questions. So with that, the first one on the list is John Pettit, followed by Glenn Morgan. Ready? Okay. Do you have questions over here? Thank you.
[inaudible]
That's a diversion, not a shift, but a diversion.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm John Pettit from Rich Road Southeast. One of the points which I'm trying to make here tonight is that personally, every service I've used for the last 20 years, you know, 20 years ago, they charged me one price, now they charge me another. I'm not sure you guys value the service you provide here. People are willing to pay for services. They want public services, and they want safety. Okay? And you haven't sought any raise in your actual levy rate, which you're capable of doing. You've put the courthouse issue on it, but you could have easily put a raise so that everyone would have enough money. And when I say that, what I watch here going on, I watch the county commissioners basically doing micromanaging of all of the elected officials' offices. Okay? It's not right. They have legal obligation to do their jobs, and they're entitled to the proper amount of funds, not because we happen to have that much available. Okay? That being said, I've been in contact with some people, including the sheriff, about additional deputies that he would say would be the right amount, correction officer, right amount. There was a Ming study done that indicated that we should be doing millions of dollars worth of work to repair all 22 facilities you have, but we haven't been going there. And I'm going to use a lot more time because I have a lot of questions of a lot of the people. So my first question before the auditor.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. My question I'm going to ask is this. I saw that you're going to be getting another 410,000, and part of that is funds from the election process related to the courthouse. Now, if I understood right, is there 177,000 that is planned for that courthouse election?
Hang on. Your time stops. Go, Mary. Thank you.
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Oh, you'll have to get to the microphone, though, Mary. Or do we have one here?
I don't have those figures with me, but thinking back to the presentation I did during the budget, I believe 177 is correct. Does that sound familiar? I could verify that and get back to you, but I'm fairly certain it is.
You might as well stay. Have another question. Okay, my next question is, if they chose to choose an election date other than the 28th, where this was going to be a separate election just for them, whether they were like on the same time where schools ran theirs, would the cost for that be about $24,000?
No, I'm not sure where you came up with that number. Elections are billed on a prorated share per registered voter, as well as other things on the ballot, so the county would still be, occur most of the cost.
So I took notice on the plan, some of the plans, and I see multiple school districts all going to be running their elections. Every one of those voters would be counted, and they would have to be sharing in the cost. My question is, are we spending like at least $100,000 more to run a private election just for this courthouse issue?
Stop the clock a little.
Yeah, my apologies. I don't have that information in front of me, but I think one thing to point out in the 177,000 is there's a lot that wasn't incorporated in that cost, because, for example, my full-time staff are here anyway. The facility, we pay for anyway. So I can't really say that that's accurate. When we bill jurisdictions, we're required to bill overhead and things like that. So those were just costs of paper, envelopes, and things like that. So if it was another jurisdiction to have a countywide election on their own, it would be significantly more than the 177,000. But the county will be paying for facilities regardless of whether there's an election going or not. I hope that makes sense.
My next question's for the roads department, whoever's in charge of the roads fund.
Okay, go ahead and ask. Go ahead and ask.
Okay, the question I have...
Right into the microphone, John.
The question I have has to do with a diversion of funds, or if you want to phrase it, the realignment, which I don't necessarily agree with about the language, because I don't think you can do it until you hit the 180 levy rate. But that being said, what's the impact of taking $3 million out of the roads fund towards the taking care of our roads?
And identify yourself, Karen, would you? Thank you.
Karen Wees, Public Works. So just want to clarify, are you talking about diversion or levy shift? We're talking about the diversion. We're talking about the 1.5 million that's used specifically, as Robin pointed out, for traffic safety enforcement. Okay. So in terms of the levy shift, which I think is the larger number that you referred to, the $3 million, of course, it has an impact on roads, activities, and projects. But we, just like the county, for every activity that they go through, we go through the process of prioritizing our roads, projects, and the maintenance and preservation activities that are done on our roads to develop the list of the highest priority items. So we use the funds that we have available to us for the most efficient and effective use of them, recognizing, just like the county general fund, we can always do more with more funding as it's available.
Previously, I heard the number related to getting a mile of chip seal... Previously, I heard the number related to getting a mile of chip seal done on a road to be about $42,000. So would the impact really represent, $3 million represent about 70 miles of roads that we wouldn't be able to do a chip seal surface on? Is that about right?
I don't have that number with me or available right now. I can certainly get back to you on that.
We would obviously be using that full $3 million only for chip seal, so to do that division or math is probably just a little bit misleading, but I can certainly get back to you with what that mile of chip seal would lead.
Okay. Another question has, the county has a transportation benefit district that I believe has been being heavily promoted from the roads department in order to gain revenue, in order to do more projects. And my question is, is the reason why the roads department needs more money is because they may be diverting or going to have a levy shift that causes that problem?
Well, again, I think, I think that when we look at the expenditures on the county, we're looking at them as a whole county and the priorities for the whole county. So we are looking at all our available revenue sources and opportunities to maximize those revenue sources so that we can use them for those county priorities as is the best fit. So yes, we certainly are looking at the transportation benefit district as being an option to raise more funding for specific roads projects. And I guess in all honesty, yes, we are looking at that because we all have limited sources of funding, and so we want to take advantage of every legally available opportunity for us to raise funds for purposes. In this case, it would be for roads. I have to go back and get my specifics on the transportation benefit district, but even then, the funds that you raise through the transportation benefit district are only available for certain types of projects and roads activities.
So let's go over here, Karen, with the mic, and then so the department director or elect can answer from over here.
I'm actually going to direct this one over here to Ms. Campbell, related to a quick question related to road funds. The road taxes are levied, is it correct, only upon the unincorporated Thurston County area?
That's correct.
Okay. And so therefore, when you do a levy shift, you're going to take taxes that belong to the unincorporated area and then just move it into the general fund, so they pay a higher percentage of taxes towards general fund rates than what the city does?
So no, actually, that's not how it works. The way it works is you set an amount of money, the board sets the amount of money to be shifted from the road fund to the general fund. The decrease in the road levy, you calculate that decrease based on the dollar amount coming out, so the people in the unincorporated area have a decrease in how much they pay for roads. And then countywide, you calculate how much the increase is in the levy in the general fund, and it's actually less because it's spread amongst more properties. So in cents per thousand, the decrease in the road levy itself is more than the increase in the general fund levy. So it is still parity on who pays for services.
But a reduced figure to going to the roads will produce less service available from the road fund to serve the people.
What I would say to that is there is less money available specifically for road projects, but as Ms. Wies said, the board sets the highest priorities across the county, and they take the entire county's needs into consideration.
Okay. The next question, I'm going to go back to you, Robin, again, which is, this has a central services question. I took note that there is a direct tie to eliminate funding towards the Mancered roofs and put it out there for five years when it's in deplorable condition. Who made that actual decision to not do maintenance on the courthouse?
So the Board of County Commissioners makes the decisions regarding funding and projects on the capital facilities plan. There are proposals brought by staff to the board, and specifically about the Mancered roof. The Mancered roof, the part that you see with the peeling paint and the rust, that's cosmetic. And the reason that we moved that out five years, that's not the part of the roof that protects the buildings. That's strictly a cosmetic thing, the Mancered roof. We are actually in the midst of a project to repair a roof on Building 3 that will protect the building. Those projects were not moved out, but the ones that are cosmetic were considered a lower priority. The board, on at least two occasions, reviewed the capital facilities plan and reviewed the proposals of staff on when projects should go. I will also say regarding the capital facilities plan, that it is a plan, and it's not the budget. And as long as the project is on the plan, should we have funds available to do those projects? We can move them forward. Or ones that we had thought we'd be able to move, we can move out farther if we don't have funds available. It's strictly a plan, and the board has approved the plan. But as long as the projects are on the plan, we can do them as we're able.
Okay. The next question is the MING report, 2016, which talked about conditions of the entire facility of county. They issued a directive that there's severe need for a certain amount of deficiency in the amount of $26 million and register a program over six years. Why has the county decided not to go forward with doing any of that?
So the MING study was a consultant. It was not a directive. It was a report that was given to the board. And what the consultant indicated, it's been a while since I've looked at the MING report. I don't have the details handy, but we can't afford to do all of the things in that report. We can only afford certain projects, and we have prioritized the most important ones to do. So we took the MING report as advice, and we are doing those projects as we can.
Okay.
You have time for, you have six seconds left, so you have time for another one?
Okay. My last question is, since you're representing central services, the new proposed courthouse would be twice the square footage of the current facility.
Would.
Would the maintenance cost on that also be more money than the current facility as far as running a regular scheduled maintenance?
Yes, they would.
And substantially more?
We've not run the precise numbers yet.
Okay. But you have lack of maintenance on this facility without money, but you'd want to do more with more cost for the new one. Is that right?
We would have greater square footage that would require greater maintenance fees.
Thank you.
All right. Glenn Morgan, followed by Kristi White. See how smoothly that went back and forth? Now, we have a microphone over here for directors or electors to come up and use so we can just kind of keep it going smoothly rather than sharing a podium.
So once again, just for the record, my name's Glenn Morgan. I live between Tonato and Rochester, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss budgets. I've been doing this here, like I said, a number of years, and I wish I did more of it over the last couple of years. But one of the, I guess, one of the main comments I did have is that although the Section G of the, that we just spoke about in the previous hearing, the change that was reflected there on the proposal is actually reflected in the budget as removing item number 22 from the central services budget of the $250,000 repair. So that is reflected in the budget, is actually being kicked out to some future date. So the budget has reflected that. One thing I thought I would just correct, I think, for the record, just to make sure, and I don't think, Robin, that you meant this when you were discussing the use of tax dollars in Thurston County, but the truth is, the majority of those tax dollars do stay in the county. They don't stay with the county commission as far as whether you have jurisdiction over those dollars. The 1782, roughly, you do, but the dispersment of the other dollars, whether it goes to the city, that stays in Thurston County. It may be the city that manages it, but it stays here with the people who paid those taxes here. And the school district, which is the majority of that, some percentage of that goes to the state. And although they do squander a huge percentage of our tax dollars, there is some percentage that does come back and flow up to our shores. Last I looked at OSPI numbers, Thurston County's not one of the counties that loses as much tax dollars as, say, King or Pierce or Snohomish, although we do squander a bit of it. But the majority of those tax dollars actually do stay within the county. They just aren't necessarily with this commission whether they get used here. And I think one of the other items, just looking at the budget, and on August 14th last year, the county gave $200,000 to the city of Olympia. And I think that if you're going to look at some items perhaps, and that was basically for the courthouse facility, I would look at that as an item to claw back from the city of Olympia. I don't believe that was a good faith effort on the city of Olympia. They've never had the money. They don't have the money, and they won't have the money to help on the new courthouse proposal. They know they don't have the money. They're fiscally tapped out. They haven't budgeted for it in their proposal, and they had no intention of doing it when you sent that money to them. So that money, I think, was probably misused, and I think bringing that back to the courthouse would probably go a long ways towards solving some of the roof repairs. The other thing that we would, could be able to look at is the $177,000 for the April tax, or for the election next year. You would save a substantial amount by running that on either the November ballot or the, it could be the August, even the primary ballot, because ballots do have to go to every single voter already in the county in both of those times. And so you would save a substantial amount. I remember the last time, it has been a while since I looked at a budget cost on a per-ballot basis for the county, but I remember it being probably closer. It appears to me you'd probably save about $125,000 to $150,000, just in that option as well. So, and the other thing I wanted to point out is the risk pool increase is really more of a direct cost reflection of a riskier legal environment that Thurston County has created for itself. When I look at the risk pool numbers, and it's been about a year since I've looked at this, the top 10 losses in the risk pool, six of those came out of Thurston County over the last 20 years. And so the Maytown case being one of the more spectacular losses lately, and Thurston County chose to go all the way up to the Supreme Court to get a spectacular 9-0 loss. And I think that a lot of these can be avoided with more effective legal counsel, which has been a common complaint that I've brought up to this committee, or to the commission here. This commission, the previous commission, I really don't care who's sitting here, the legal counsel that you get is regularly deficient, and it's reflected in losing litigation repeatedly that, based on the legal counsel you're given. If you want to save some of that money, get different legal counsel, so that at least you're getting better advice for some of the decision-making processes that you're going through. And the other thing that I think that's an underappreciated part of the costs associated with the potential for growth, and that tax dollars that we get from property taxes are directly reflected by the ability of the county to grow. The more you grow, that exceeds the 1% that allows you to actually increase the budget that you have in the county, far more than the 1% restriction. And CPED, which is the new term, I know we change these terms periodically for the Central Planning Department, but I believe that there is a much greater cost associated with having a more aggressive policy that denies people the ability to improve their property and to locate businesses here, and in fact, create an aura that this is the worst place to locate a business. Richard Brothers left for a reason. That's $1 million out of our budget that we've lost every year since then in sales tax revenue or more. And that's just a highlighted, that's a very obvious, visible example. There's plenty of other smaller, less obvious examples. And I think that a much more comprehensive review of how we approach our planning department, how we treat people, and analyzing whether there's a greater cost associated to that in our budget by basically denying people the ability to grow and to live here. So with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss this today. I didn't have any great questions to ask anybody here, but next year, that'll be fine. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Kristi White.
Kristi White, again, Delphi Valley. Commissioner Edwards, I'd like to encourage you, your comments regarding the tax revenues that we don't get for marijuana, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that through the Association of Counties, that maybe you can put pressure on our state government officials to get a bigger piece of that pie. I agree with you. I don't think we're getting our fair share, and so go get them. In regards to the whole budget that we just listened to, and a great deal of work in that, my comments would be one that we do as much transparency regarding the courthouse. I'm hearing things about maintenance, again, as an accounting professional, you know, measuring those costs of repairs versus something new, the cost that it might take for a special election done in April, that somehow we can get a really succinct presentation of, here's what it would cost if we did repairs X. Here's what it's going to cost, including that new maintenance, because when you go into that much square footage, you're going to look at more costs as well. That for the public, as a representative of the public, that we can get something very clear about what those cost comparatives can be. The tax burden that we will ask of everyone to add to our property taxes if we do go with the new courthouse is substantial. And looking at the presentation that you did, Robin, looking at what our economy may be going into or not, or even staying flat, we're going to ask more. I recently spoke with someone who went to get plans to build a house, modest 2,100-square-foot house. The permits were over $40,000 just in permits, and I was astonished at that. And so I think when we look at the burden of what's being put on the individual citizen, we really take a good, hard look at what our total costs are of all of these things. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. That exhausts the list of folks that have signed up, but is there anybody in the House that would like to address the board on the budget? Anyone? 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 That's sufficient. Thank you all very much. And so let me ask, what is the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to close the October 7, 2019, public hearing on the Thurston County 2019-2020 biennial midterm budget adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're closed. We adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.